Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, July 13, 2020. This evening, we have an agenda that will begin, as usual, with coronavirus community update from our Emergency Manager Director and Fire Chief, Mike Cassidy. Mike, if you could join us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How are you?
I'm exceptional, thank you.
That's great.
I'm pleased to report that we are still one month since our last new diagnosis, and we are more than two weeks since our last active case was recovered. Therefore, my recommendation request to the board would be, instead of daily updates, as we have been posting on the website for several months, that we go to the same model as the state and perhaps just do weekly. We obviously can change that if we get a change or a surge or increase in active and/or total cases, but right now, the daily charts aren't changing much and giving much new information.
Board members, any opinion on that before we proceed?
I mean, I think as things change, if they're changing basically weekly, I think that makes sense.
Seems reasonable to me.
Go for it, Mike.
Great, thank you. And then the other big ask and reveal for this evening would be the logistics of the annual town meeting.
Yes.
Which is coming up next Monday. So we had a very successful meeting on Friday at the site. We walked it with the town clerk and with technology and with representatives of the school and we and facilities, and we talked about what it would look like. So we will use the main entrance of the Placentino Elementary School for the public to come in. After they enter the lobby, they will take a right down the hallway, proceed past the band and the music room, and enter the large hallway known as the Yummy Bridge, which is the entrance to the hallway with the gymnasium on the left and the cafeteria on the right. That is where the town clerk will have her checkers. That's where people will check in. The first 125 or so people will be able to go to the right into the cafeteria. Anyone who comes later will be allowed to go into the gymnasium, where we will have overflow capacity. Both rooms will have chairs spaced out with the appropriate physical distancing to allow people to both sit as well as to walk past each other without encroaching on their personal space. We are very fortunate to have a great partner in HCAT. They've agreed to provide us with some AV equipment that will help minimize the need for people to be touching microphones if they wish to be heard on a particular motion or a particular article. It's their intention to provide boom mics so that they can stand off to the side and hold that above a person's head and hold that so that the person can be heard.
So the mic will go to the speaker rather than this speaker coming to them?
Very much in a Phil Donahue type of model from years ago. Yes, that is correct. With the exception of those that are on boards and committees or the officials at the front on the stage, but in terms of audience participation, there will be one fixed microphone that will be available just inside the hallway into the cafeteria, which will be used for overflow, so that if someone wishes to be heard on an article and they're in overflow seating, then a signal will be given to the moderator before he moves the question so that that individual can come from the overflow room just into the side entrance of the cafeteria and can be heard on that separate microphone. And because the schools, when they were first built and when they were designed, were not designed for summer occupation, the concern is with environmental comfort and for the attendees. Therefore, Facilities was able to get a quote for temporary air conditioning of both the cafeteria as well as the gymnasium. That quote, as it exists, is just over $6,000, which would consist of two separate chiller units, one in the front of the school, one to the rear of the school, that would be ducting cool conditioned air into the cafeteria and one pumping conditioned cool air into the gymnasium. So that will be our best attempt to be able to condition the space to make it more comfortable for attendees. But we do want to remind people, and this will be part of my messaging to the community, is that if you have an underlying health condition where you may not be able to tolerate higher temperatures, it might be best to stay home. We don't want to dissuade anyone from coming to participate in town meeting, but we also don't want them to be physically uncomfortable. In terms of, once you're in the space, it would be very similar to previous years when we've been at town meeting. Once you check in, you're there. It's kind of like a school dance. You really don't have the ability to move in and out from one space to the next. So there is an area, obviously, there's the overflow seating in the gymnasium, and then there's also more room down the hall of the Yummy Bridge, that if someone wished to be present and have checked in for the town meeting, but not sit through several of the early articles, but was wanting to be heard for a later article, they could wait in the hallway, but we really don't have a provision for them, once they've checked in, to sit in their car and then only come in for an article on which they wish to be heard. So their choice would either be wait to come and register until it's later in the meeting. They could be watching the meeting on Facebook Live, or they could, you know, get a text alert from somebody who might be in the meeting or at home watching the meeting and then enter and check in. But once you've checked in, it's really a situation because of flow path and the ability to have people going in and out. Due to state guidance, we do need to direct people's path in terms of how they're walking. So we would not really have the ability for people to be sitting in their cars, waiting, and only coming in when they wanted to be heard on a specific article, and coming back in and out. If they wanted to wait and just come in once, that would be fine, but the in and out isn't really going to be capable, because the town clerk, for the integrity of our voting process, needs to make sure that the person who checked in, who's received the voting slip, is indeed the person who is acting on a particular article.
They represent the quorum as well.
Absolutely. So if the board is willing, the expense for the chiller units, just over $6,000, would be something that I'd be looking for board authorization for. It should be covered by the CARES Act, but it wasn't specifically called out as part of our original CARES Act spreadsheet. So in accordance with your policy, I would want to get cover from you before we have Facilities commit to that. If we decided that we only wanted to do one of the two spaces, the cost would be about half. So it would be just over $3,000 for just one room.
Mr. Stroll, any questions on the projected cost of the spot coolers? A little high for a short period of time, but I understand. And so this would be just the rental of the coolers? There's no, like, you know, we don't need any other generators or anything?
It would be an exterior, it would be like a mobile generator that was set up just outside each of the two spaces.
Okay.
And would be ducting the cool air in. So they would be outside and would be pushing air in, in one case through windows, in the other case through doorways.
Okay.
And they understand what our power situation is and how they would run those.
And apologies, because I wasn't actually at the walkthrough. So this wouldn't, you know, if we're pumping it in through windows into the cafeteria, is it's going to be something where you're going to have a group of people who might be sitting near it or just going to get blasted with cold air and frozen out? And then the other side's going to be, I just, you know, I just want to make sure that's not, it's going to-
Right. They're not going to just show up at 6:30 and flip these on. This would be set up earlier in the day to condition the space.
Okay.
And it would be brought up to temperature, and then the equipment would just be maintaining it.
Okay.
So obviously, if you were in that back corner where it was being ducted in, it would probably be a little bit cooler for you than others.
Sure.
And if that's the case, people should be encouraged to bring a light jacket or a sweater or something, just like any conference where they tell you, you know, be prepared to shed layers or add layers for your effort.
Sure. Is it, okay, I did have another question that's not-
Please go ahead.
-to remain. So one other thing was, is that, you know, you talked about the process for the overflow to speak to town meeting. What about voting? Would we just have a counter in that room?
Yes.
Taking the role?
Yes. And so there will be a video screen in there, and so they will have live capability of knowing what's taking place in the main room.
Okay.
And then there will be two-way communication for them to be able to communicate to the moderator if someone wishes to be heard on an article. And then the town clerk would also have a checker, just as she normally has checkers-
Right.
-in the auditorium for each of the six sections. This would just be one of the seating sections that she would have someone assigned to.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Tina?
A couple specific for Monday and then another one. So I'm okay with $6,000 for one night, I think, but not for three nights at $18,000, right? So we have on the warrant that we could go into Tuesday and then into Wednesday. I don't really practically think that would happen, but-
Correct.
This is a one-night commitment here with this vendor?
Yeah.
One-night contract?
Yes. And this also would once again be a reinforcement for why the consent agenda is a great governance model and for us to be able to get through some housekeeping items very quickly without a lot of debate.
All right. So one night. And then what time do the doors open for people to arrive?
We don't-
In total?
Right, yeah. I would expect that the town clerk and her people would be ready to receive the public to register by 6:30.
Okay. And then 100-
Oh, sorry. No, it's a 7:30 meeting. Let me move that up to 7 o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Your meetings are 7, our meeting is 7:30.
And then it's 100 in the cafeteria, max?
No, no, it's about 125.
Okay.
Not including the folks on the stage and at the front.
Okay. And then the overflow in the gymnasium is?
115.
100?
15.
15?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for Monday night. Thank you for preparing all this. I can't imagine how long that setup's going to take, but-
It actually should go fairly quickly. I've got a lot of experience from church and camp of setting up folding chairs in rows.
You whip them out?
And so it suits me very well, and we've got support from both facilities as well as from the schools to make sure that, because we need to specifically lay out where the chairs need to be, and that's why we're going with this venue as opposed to the high school, because with the fixed seating, it's a lot harder to enforce, and with the flexibility that we have with the cafeteria, we can set up singles and doubles so that if, you know, a family comes together and there are two individuals, they can sit together, but not violate the six-foot distancing to other individuals.
It's like a game of chess.
Or Tetris.
Tetris is more like it. All right. So speaking of school events, you would then immediately head into graduation the next weekend.
Yes.
Are there other plans underway for that week in terms of graduation and the seniors? And any updates for?
I have been in conversation with some of the class of 2020 parents, and I continue to disappoint, because even as recently as Friday morning, the last call that I was on with the Department of Public Health, the officials from DPH and DLS were very clear about the unconfined outdoor spaces, you still can't have more than 100 people. So the desire to have gathering, a dance, a barbecue, whatever you would call it, even if it were two cohorts of 100 separated in the middle by a DJ-
Yeah.
-that still does not meet the guidelines of the state in this current phase.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mike, did you have something else to get into in your report before we brought in the issue of the cost for the spot coolers? Did you want to continue further with other reports for preparation of town meeting? Have you covered all the bases?
I believe I did. Obviously, we'll have some hand sanitizer available and all of the precautions and signage will be in place. And again, thank you to Facilities, thank you to the schools. Everybody's really pulling together. Board of Health is lending us some signs that they have from their clinics, and so this is truly a whole-of-town effort to get us to implement this plan.
So I have several questions. Is the moderator informed of your plans for two rooms and the, as Ben was saying, the movement of a vote from one room to the other, making sure that people have the opportunity to properly move into the proper space to vote and be heard?
Right.
Do you still know what's going on?
Yeah. These plans were being finalized on Friday afternoon. I absolutely can update the moderator. My previous conversations with him had indicated his flexibility-
Great.
... and his willingness to just tell him where to show up.
Sure.
And he would moderate, but we worked out all of the communication issues of making sure that he would know and be able to see.
You're obviously going to be working that night-
I hope so.
-with a fire chief emergency management hat on. Will it be somebody who's more of a hall monitor, who can help direct people and make sure they're abiding by the social distance rules?
We do have some staff who I'm sure we can-
We encountered some issues last, this past week with some residents coming to town hall for the first time, and the rules were a little awkward, to say the least, in our space. It'll take some time before people get used to it. And personally, I've observed in the workplace that people have their own anxieties around gatherings now that we're entering Phase 3 and so forth.
Sure.
I think the issue of having somebody around to help guide and control any kind of misunderstanding or proper methods of communicating and movement would be very helpful that night, especially for the first half hour or so as people are getting situated.
Of course. No, we've got a cohort of people that we can ask to help with that process.
Okay. You mentioned something about seating in the main auditorium. There's room for 125 seated positions that can be moved depending upon the size of the family. What about the guests, the moderator, the town clerk, the general counsel, so forth? How is that all going to lay out?
So those will be at the front of the room as well. Those will be physically-
Are they on the stage?
Some will be on the stage, some will be in front of the stage, just similar to what we've done at the high school in the past.
Okay.
And they also will be distanced appropriately.
So are the, is the finance committee along one side, the select board on the front, are they alongside the front of the stage?
Across the front of the stage, it would be your board with the town administrator, and then off on the other side, we have seating for the chairman of the finance committee and the vice chair. Due to a seven-member committee, that would require 42 feet worth of tables, which is not a good and efficient use of the front of the room. So we've encouraged them, just as the school committee often sits towards the front and can get up and be heard on a specific article, that they would delegate most of their speaking responsibilities to the chair and the vice chair, both of who were at the planning meeting last Friday.
And there would be three to four people on the stage?
Four.
Four people on the stage?
Yes.
Okay.
Very similar to what we've had at the high school.
Right. And citizens can still make use of restrooms?
Yes.
They can get up and move around?
Absolutely.
They can, okay.
Yep. Mr. Vudé, the business manager, indicated that he would have two sets of restrooms available.
Okay. Well, the floor patterns, in some retail establishment, you see arrows directing people to move. Will you have that type of environment for people to move through the space to?
Yes. Very similar to what we did for the voting.
Okay.
Was that only last month? Yes.
And must people wear masks when they attend town meeting?
Yes. Yeah. So it's both physical distancing as well as appropriate face coverings.
Face coverings, good.
And that will all be communicated in, it is my expectation, after getting the board's blessing this evening for, in concept, what this looks like, as we discussed before, there were some communities that did a nice job of baselining expectations for the public. My expectation would be to finalize a document summarizing exactly what we've been talking about, painting a picture for people, what they can expect when they show up for annual town meeting, and making that available to the public as well as a reminder and where the warrant can be found. I would send out a blackboard message to people who are registered through our system so that they get the reminder, and we would also post it on the website.
Could you kindly put in your memo that there will be a consent agenda approach? That's new to Holliston.
Yes.
And just let folks know we'll be moving to that level of communication.
Sure.
Just writing it down awfully fast.
Sorry, Tina.
Love the agenda.
I have one, yeah. One question about displays in the, when people walk in.
Yes.
So in typical town meeting, you have the opportunity to linger, read, talk. I know that we have two possible displays that will be requested or have in the past been requested. So a video screen is one, to loop a video through, and then the second is, I think we have something for Article 22 or the pamphlet would like to be displayed or presented. So is that, first of all, is that a possibility? And second of all, how would someone go about making sure?
So those possibilities would probably be best suited for in the main lobby of the Placentino, when people first come in, before they take the right to go down the hall.
Okay.
And I believe there might be a flat panel monitor in that lobby that we might be able to take advantage of for the looping video.
Okay.
And then we could set up a table that didn't obstruct a means of egress for a pamphlet that wanted to be distributed.
And who should those individuals contact if they do decide to display information?
Probably our technology director.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one follow-up question. You all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mike, prior to the town meeting, I know of these two boards that hold meetings briefly to kind of catch up on last-minute developments and so forth, namely the finance committee, the select board. I think the school committee does also, but I'm not sure. Where will these groups be allowed to caucus prior to town meeting?
Finance committee has posted for remote participation at 6:30, so their expectation is that they would meet via Zoom, adjourn, and then arrive at town meeting. The select board would be able to meet in the library of the Placentino. So when you come into the Placentino lobby, it would be down to the left would be the library that would be available for you.
Okay. Has the school committee asked for any space?
They've not.
Okay. All right. I think that covers most things. Mike, pulling this off will be different, to say the least, a bit challenging, but I do think, based on what I hearing on other communities, that generally, folks are pretty obliging. They understand the circumstances. You'll probably find some people that are uncommonly gracious as they encounter what we're about to give them next Monday night. And I'm happy that the moderator is as flexible as he is, clearly want to make sure that the environment befits a good quorum, a good debate, and a good volume of participation for the end result. So that's great. Do you want to vote regarding the cooling unit?
Uh...
Or consensus? I'm happy to take a vote.
I think your policy with regards to expenditure of the CAREFonds would require a vote.
I'll take a motion to approve the, do you have the exact amount? I know it's $6,000.
It was 6,035. I know he was going to get a second quote, so I would say not to exceed 6,035.
Very good.
So motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve $6,035 for the rental of two cooling units for town meeting on July 20th?
Up to.
Up to.
Up to.
Second with a comment that that money should be from the CARES Act funding.
Okay. Having said that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That carries?
Great.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Appreciate your updates and stay in touch over the next week if anything develops.
Absolutely.
You do know now that we're spending money, it's going to probably be really cold and rainy outside.
Yeah.
If we hadn't done it, it would be hot and steam.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I know it. I know it. Well, I do know, I've been in that room when it's warm, and it's treacherous, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Moving on. Warrants. Ben?
All right. We've got, it looks like, two warrants here. The first is for $1,896,923.17. Of that, the town payroll is $638,516.85.
Motion to approve the warrants is read.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes.
And we have a second warrant here for $438,322.4. Of that, $263,749.73 is town payroll.
Motion to approve that warrant item is read by Ben Sparrow.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you, Ben. Public comment. Ben Sparrow.
I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Tina?
I have one comment to make, and so this is sort of, I believe, Mark Aronian's legacy. I think this is one of, I think this is a great idea that he had, which is to update residents when we have water main breaks in town, to keep that out for people to consider and then understand. So we had a water main break on Dorset Road on Friday, and I believe we had one on Church Street today. There'll be more information next week. Invoices will be totaled and presented during public comment next week. Again, I think it's important for residents to understand the frequency of problems and the costs associated with an aging water infrastructure. And so these facts will be presented again to the public when it comes time to, again, propose a water main replacement study. So just keep this information flowing out there, no pun intended, for people to hear about.
Excellent. Thank you, Tina.
Mm-hmm.
I just have one note to thank our former town clerk, Jackie Delicker. She sent me a very kind note, and the note stressed the message of public service, and while it was to me, it can be to anyone else in town. I know we're past the election season, but please, Holliston, if you have any inkling to serve your community, it's quite rewarding, and I highly encourage anyone to get involved at some level, volunteer in town. The town thrives on volunteer efforts, and folks like Jackie, who have lived there here their whole lives and have served so much, recognize it, and it is quite, it is quite rewarding. So thank you, Ms. Delicker, and I encourage folks to keep the community spirit strong and thriving in Holliston. Moving on, we're going to talk about the annual town meeting motions. Last Friday, Mr. Ritter, on his last day, pulled together the motions for each of the articles. He asked Town Council to review them. He did. He made some apparently modest changes to them. These motions are for our use only. They're not generally distributed, but I noted that the document that Ms. Muzzy sent along to us today needs some more work, specifically the description of votes. So, Donner, if you'd be so kind, just make the modifications to reflect the votes within the finance committee report that was delivered on Friday, we would appreciate it. I think the motion and the content otherwise appears to be intact. Have you both had a chance to look at them?
Mm-hmm.
Ben?
Yeah.
Any questions on that?
I think we do want to make sure that the consent, motions for consent agenda line up, because I believe there's a little-
So you're referring to Article, prior to Article 1 with the suggested motion to move 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 14, 18, and 20. I do know the moderator has instructed us to remove Article 5 and Article 4 from the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that brings it down to, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 14, 18, and 20.
Well, so the only, what I'm noticing right now with that is just that the road acceptances is labeled as Article 20, and it appears to be Article 19.
Just one second, okay?
Sure.
Can we just run through what will be on the consent agenda one last time? Which articles?
Yeah, that's what I'm pulling up. Jay Tarleman pulled together his consent agenda memorandum last week slowly. Not loading quickly enough here.
So I had, I did have a question. I'm fine with 18 being on the consent agenda. My question would be just where it's a new revolving fund, if some explanation to the voters is a benefit. I mean, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, I just am noting that it's a new revolving fund.
Yeah, I think, I think what we should do is dwell a little bit on this item, because as Ben points out, what appears to be the description of the consent agenda from Jeff's draft, I think, is inaccurate.
Mm-hmm.
If we could ignore what you see for a moment, let me suggest the following articles that Jay had flagged for Bill Mayor's consideration last week. They were articles... I'll name the articles rather than number them.
Okay.
But it was Article 3, sale of foreclosed tax titled properties.
Mm-hmm.
Number 6, sale of surplus equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Article 7, acceptance of Chapter 90 state roadway funds.
Mm.
Number 8, reduction of interest rate for tax deferral program.
Mm-hmm.
Number 9, increase in income limit for tax exemption program. Number 10, the revolving funds limit. That's the one you're talking about, right?
No.
Nope?
I was just talking about 18, the new.
Okay. Oh, okay. And number 14, the CPA report and minimum appropriations.
Do they...
That was 7.
Okay. Do they not generally speak on the CPA?
CPC.
CPC does not normally speak where there's a report there?
They do if there is a planned project within the CPC. This year, there is not. He's looking to expend the $5,000.
Okay.
That he typically does for administrative purposes.
Okay.
So there's nothing to report.
Yep. Okay. All right.
You're right, by the way.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. So, those are the ones that I have been tracking. If we were to go back, let me just... One second. Sale of foreclosed, surplus equipment, Chapter 90, reduction of interest. Three seconds.
Sure. Take your time. This is worth getting right.
So on the list that Jeff had provided us, number 3 looks okay. 4 and 5 need to be removed.
Mm-hmm.
6 is okay. 7 lines up. 8 lines up. 9 lines up. 10 lines up. 14. So 18 and 20 should also be removed. So Donna, when you go through the motions, this is one of the first pages, just make sure that what is shown to be Article 4, Article 5, Article 18, and Article 20 are not on the consent agenda. And to be clear, the following articles should be on the consent agenda list. Correct me if I'm wrong, guys. 3...
I'm sorry, let's pause here for one second, though, because Ben is correct. The most recent warrant is Article 19 is road acceptances. Article 20 is Washington Street at woodland and high street traffic signal LED. I think you just instructed Donna to remove...
20.
So I believe we're looking to remove 19. So basically, we stop at 14. Nothing... There's nothing on the consent agenda after 14. I think that's all we really need to say in the end.
Yep. Yes.
Okay.
The following, Donna, will be on the consent agenda list. Articles 3, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 14. It's a total of 7. You guys all right with that?
Yeah, John, I have a question. If there's any public discussion on a consent agenda, Bill will handle it, I'm sure, but does someone from the board want to be prepared to speak about why we're choosing to do this this way, or...
It's going to be in the opening... My opening remarks.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
All set?
Yep. I'm good.
Any other comments on the motions? Which, again, is our property. This is not... We don't hand this out. I reviewed these this morning, and again, the only thing to me that was really amiss were the Finance Committee's votes. They weren't incorporated.
I'm going to be a stickler here for 15.
Hold on.
It should be that the vote required is a 2/3s vote. I know that we're going here indefinite postponement, the suggested motion, but...
Right.
I'd rather see that be correct.
Yep. I'll just catch up with you, Tina. Okay, so Article 15, Donna, at the very bottom says vote required. Says majority. It should read 2/3s.
The other thing about that article as well is that the top, it says Mr. Shada, and it said sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. So I'm not... I don't remember off the top of my head if that's our article, or it probably should be the Finance Committee's article.
Yeah, it is definitely Finance Committee.
So... That sponsored by needs to be changed for Article 15 in the motions.
Anything else?
Yes, one more thing.
You said yes?
Yes, one more thing. If we could do a word search, and where it says Board of Selectmen, replace with Select Thank you.
All right. I think that covers the motions. Ben, you good for now?
Aye.
If you find any other edits, just shoot them over to Donna.
Will do.
All right. Under Board Business, we have an item tonight that I'm going to pull back on. That's an appointment of myself to the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. I need some clarity on that assignment, so...
Donna presented that, but you can read that for later.
Thank you. The next item under Board Business is a letter to congressional and state representatives. I believe you had drafted something last week.
Yes.
Tina?
Yes, so...
Is it ready for primetime?
Yes, it is. I believe so. Thank you to, I think again, it's Donna Muzzi, but thank you for the edits and the professional presentation of the letter. The school committee approved it on Thursday night, and so the chair will sign it on behalf of her committee. I'd suggest the same, just to keep the logistics of getting this everyone's signature on it simple. So, John, if you would sign... If you feel comfortable in the vote, we'd sign it. Well, we voted last week, I believe. So you just need to sign it, and then I'll take it to the chairs of both...
Sounds good.
The school committee, and then the Finance Committee will review it tomorrow night, and I will leave it with the Finance Committee Chair for their decision.
All right. Have they seen the letter?
Yes, so they got a copy on Friday. Yes.
Okay. Excellent. All right. Reserve fund and year-end transfers? I have not heard of any, Ben. You don't have anything in the folder, right?
I do not have anything here.
No, just place order.
Yep. Okay. We have an item, road acceptances confirmatory vote per town meeting article. That must have been put in by Jeff. I find that kind of be curious, because I thought we voted on the whole warrant.
I thought I saw there was an email that Council wanted us to... Let me see if I can pull it up.
Sure.
Wanted to ensure that we had a specific vote about it in a meeting. Let me find the...
Talaman or Kate?
I believe it was Talaman. But I believe Donna sent it to us. Does that sound right, Donna? No? Okay. What did I see?
Who has made this request that they get a vote from the Select Board? Is this, you think, Jeff wrote or before he left?
Yes.
It's not coming from the town planner?
No.
Where was it? So I have the email from, let's say, the 9th of July, Ben. I don't see anything where Jay mentioned further action on the road acceptance piece, only to the extent that I'm wondering if Jeff felt that we needed to change... Take a vote, because we changed the title of the article. Let's see. I mean, I have no objection to taking a vote for it. It just seems odd.
Well, I'm wondering if it's this language right here. So as you get into the Article 19 here, the language goes such ways having been laid out as town ways by the Select Board. So my interpretation would be is this is like a bringing ancient history forward into 2020 here, so that we're sort of actually revoting, because these are old accepted ways, right? We've got 2011 and 2001 road acceptance, and so my guess would be that we're looking to just...
Endorse.
Renew that. Yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, for the sake of dotting an i perhaps here, I'll take a motion to approve Article 19 road acceptances in its current form.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the record show we endorsed it. All right. The next item, set of meeting date for Lowland Industrial Park Trucking Route. So let's talk about this real quickly, because I... We had scheduled something for June prior to you coming onboard, Ben, and we stopped it because it had some unfinished business. There are multiple parties involved with the Lowland Industrial Park Truck Route issue, including the Butters, Commercial Industry, Planning Board to some extent as well. And our goal as a board was to bring them into a room, or virtual as it is, to have a discussion about what would be a proper remedy going forward to address resident concerns about large truck traffic on woodland, lowland, and so forth, and the proper role of government, local government, to try and mitigate that traffic into more mainstream state roads and so forth. We... I think we all know that the Planning Board, when they came before us, was that last fall, Tina, or last summer? It was last year, right? When the Planning Board came in and talked to us about another matter on Lowland.
Mm-hmm.
I believe the former chairman had a conversation with the Planning Board Chairman about trying to come together on some work on this issue. I had a conversation with Karen probably about three weeks ago, and I don't think there was a lot of follow-through on that. So with respect to the work that has to get done to make this a successful, workable meeting, we needed to stop the progress on the one in June and project it out after town meeting. Welcome in the parties and have an honest discussion about what can be done, what should be done, if anything. What do folks think about having it as early as August?
I'm fine with it. I would certainly hope that the new town administrator have a little time to understand some of the dynamics of it, too. Not to say that he need... Just to make sure that he knows what's going on. But I'm fine with doing it in August.
Tina?
I've felt a sense of urgency to do it all along, so August sounds good to me. It is after town meeting and short order after, so yes, August, yes.
Do you want to pick a date, then?
I do.
You got your calendar out there.
I do. So we're going to... A planning board meets, what, on... Are they Wednesday evenings, planning board? Or are they Thursdays? I feel like they might go Thursdays.
I will tell you. They're Wednesday people, I think. They meet on the 16th.
Okay. I'm going to pull up here.
Thursday's the 16th, right?
Nope, 13th. 16th is a Sunday, August 16th.
I'm sorry, in July.
Oh, in July, yeah.
16th is Thursday.
So they're Thursday group meeting.
Okay. So I would say then we've got Tuesday, August 4th, or Tuesday, August 11th.
You said Tuesday. What about a week later? And I'll tell you why. To the extent that Travis is going to come onboard...
Yeah, sure.
You know, the first week, he's acclimating. That takes us to the end of July principally. He'll have... We're going to need him to coordinate the parties, the notices, and I'm going to have to have some time to reach out to Karen and the Planning Board Chairman about what we're trying to do.
Okay.
And get them queued up. I think a little bit more time might be necessary.
That's absolutely fine. So how about either Tuesday or Wednesday of the following week, the 11th or the 12th? Or would you like to go even later than that?
I was thinking beyond the 11th.
I'm sorry. Okay, so then I'm... Unless... I suppose I can call in remotely. So then we have the 18th or 19th as a Tuesday, Wednesday, and then we have the 25th or the 26th as another Tuesday, Wednesday.
Are you off both those weeks?
No, I'm not. I'm just... Those are the remaining Tuesday, Wednesdays in August, so I don't know what your plans are or Ben's plans are for travel.
Oh, all right. Do you have a preference, Ben?
Nope. First week would be a little tricky for me, but otherwise, I'm good for any of those weeks.
All right.
Let's give until the 25th. Let's...
All right.
August 25th.
Sounds good.
Tuesday.
Donna, if you could make that note to Travis when he arrives, we'll be looking to coordinate the invitation to the Butters, both commercial and residential. And I think the police chief's involved, too. I forgot to mention that. He was the one that prepared the first notice. All right, great. So we appreciate that. Any final thoughts on Lowland? Hearing none. We've reached the back end of our agenda here. Ben, if you have any other business for us?
Not at this time, no.
Tina?
So, just wanted to update the board on the situation at the landfill needing to be mowed, and looking for a little bit of guidance. Our health director is on it. Our consultant for the solar project is on it, and our DPW is hands tied, it would appear, in terms of not having the equipment in working order. And so the landfill needs to be mowed. This is an odd thing to hold up the project, but it is where we're at. We've got knee-high grass and three to four acres. And so in the absence of a town administrator this week to make the kind of decisions I feel are probably necessary, I'm looking for a little guidance on what type of authorities needed to pull the trigger to get it mowed.
My first reaction is, why can't we find adequate resources, public resources, to handle that lawn cutting? Town of Medway comes to mind, some town nearby.
Oh, like mutual aid, kind of?
Yeah, have Sean reach out to see if that kind of equipment for whatever it is, I would imagine it's got to be some kind of a specialized commercial trimmer. You're talking three acres, right? They want the whole area?
Three to four acres, correct.
Is it just grass? Is there other small trees or...
I've not been up to see it, but a private landscaper in town did go take a look at it and said it's impressive.
Jungle?
Yeah, well, I'm sure some of the stuff, if you're knee-high or waist-high, rather, is getting a little woody.
And it's... That's the cap that it's growing through, right? So...
On, yeah.
Yeah. So...
What I'm concerned about is that we lose momentum moving the project forward. I don't see this as a crisis point, but I see this as a critical point.
Can you... Your relay is on to Sean.
Sure. I'll reach out to him and see what he can...
And see if he's got any connections in surrounding communities that might be familiar with trimming...
Okay.
Whatever's growing up there on that kind of cap.
Sure.
For this purpose. Hockington comes to mind. I know they've got some solar fields, but...
Okay.
That's why... I mean, personally, I don't want to spend money on it if we don't have to, if it's something that you can call a favor in for and...
We've had a couple of discussions, and that has not come up as an option, so it's not... It's not been specifically...
He's thinking call a professional landscaper or somebody to come in.
He's frustrated that he can't get the replacement part for the piece of equipment. I think a lot of these supply chains for parts like these have sort of broken down or way backlog, and so he's waiting to get the parts, as I understand it. So the avenue that we were taking, that Scott was proposing, was like private landscaper, but three to four acres of waist-high grass is not inexpensive.
No, that'll be... That'll be a bunch of goats, maybe?
Well, it's funny you say that, because I don't know if you remember, but one of their... One of Soul Systems recommendations for...
That's right, I remember that. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Keeping the field...
Maintaining, maintaining.
Maintaining it, yeah, is sheep.
A herd of goats.
So are there any sheep herders in the town? All those who are willing to donate their services on the Via.
I think, I don't know, something tells me Sean can probably reach out to a neighboring community.
Yeah, I'll reach out to him and see what he...
Before we have to bite the bullet on any kind of expense, which seems awkward, to say the least.
Should we put it on the agenda next week? I'll reach out to him this week, and then we can have a discussion next week.
Yeah, in the event we have to take a vote on something, sure.
And just to...
Can you put Marshall Street Solar Maintenance?
Just to add to...
Thanks, Donna.
Just add the context for the sense of urgency. Just to add to, just add the context for the sense of urgency, it is tied to the ability for DEP to get in there and do some of the inspections that they need to do.
Okay.
And so, that's a critical step along the way to getting us to construction, so...
Okay.
I think everybody's trying their hardest. I think we're just in a tough spot where, you know, we're turning and saying, why can't we get sheep to do this? That's where we're at, so hopefully another town can step in and help us out.
Anything else, Tina?
That is it, thank you.
Mark Frank, I see you on the line, and I was giving a heads up that you might have a question or a comment.
I do. Hey there, guys. So, forgive me if I misunderstood, but I have a question on Article 14. It seemed like there was indication that CPC had not approved any project to go through to this town meeting. I presented to CPC in January and was under the impression that we had approval for a $10,000 drainage project at Stoddard Park, the purpose of which was to allow us to put beach sand down on the beach there afterwards. I don't know if there's more that I need to do to get that into the warrant. I was under the impression that CPC would, you know, once those votes are approved, put that through, but if there is more, or if there's something else I need to do, I am all ears.
Mark, I have to tell you, that's the first, I'm hearing about it. When we deal with the CPC, the town administrator typically checks in with the chairman to find out if he's had any meetings relative to actions against the fund. Frank then conveys that to us, and we incorporate it into the warrant. I'll note that over the last couple of months, actually, three months since we've been planning this warrant, I haven't heard a word about any such action, especially for you folks. And furthermore, I don't believe the finance committee did either, as they move forward with the vote on Article 14 that just shows administrative functions to support the committee. So, what I would do at this point is reach out to Frank and speak with him about making a floor presentation at town meeting next week. And he can certainly amend Article 14 to reflect any votes or changes that his committee has made to support what it sounds like you're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
So, if that's been done before...
I did present, sorry.
I was going to say, that's been done before.
Okay. Yeah, I did present the concept to the Select Board and my budget presentation, whenever that was, I mean, before all of this, obviously, but I definitely did not, you know, necessarily, you know, follow through with, once Article 14 was posted, I had just sort of assumed that was in there, so that's on me. I will work on that with Frank, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. You all set with that?
Well, does that change keeping Article 14 in the consent agenda?
It could, it could.
All right.
Yeah, it's a matter that Mark's got to, you have to have a conversation with him well before Monday and queue him up to, when it comes to Article 14, especially under our consent agenda. If he's, if he, here's the other thing, if he hasn't had a board, a CPC meeting, right, to approve that request, you might have to wait until the next town meeting, Mark. I don't know what he's done.
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm fairly certain that they have had that vote.
Okay.
So, I will follow up with him, and we'll follow up with you guys, so I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah, if he has had that vote and he's prepared to make a change, then to Tina's point, the article would have to come off the consent agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
But just let us know.
I will let, I will let you know tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
All right, bye.
Thanks, Mark. All right, anything else, Tina? Ben, you all set? I'm good. Anything else from the Zoom call for any other business, public comment? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Wait a second, second. Calls, I got 7:54 PM. Thanks very much, Holliston. We will see you all Monday evening for our annual town meeting. I hope you have a pleasant evening. Thank you very much. Good night.